All right, welcome everybody to the Lakeland Now Forum for the City Commission Candidates. A small audience in here, but hopefully a large audience online. Of course, we'll be putting it on our social media and our webpage later tonight, as soon as it's over. Tonight, so far, technical problems free, so that's a wonderful thing. Lakeland Now is glad to be able to give the public a chance to learn about the four candidates running for Lakeland City Commission. This event fits well with the Lakeland Now mission of getting citizens engaged with their community through news and information. We're a growing news organization that provides independent, community-driven coverage of efforts to make Lakeland more livable. We're a nonprofit, so that's a key to our operation. I have several thanks tonight. First of all, to all the candidates for participating. I want to thank Lakeland Live and its very energetic and creative executive director, Kat Agner, for providing the venue and a lot of assistance in helping set up the venue over the last few weeks and connect us with the people to handle the technology. And I thank Parker from Union Hall for live streaming the event and the various people who have helped us with the audio. I want to thank our timekeeper, Ms. Linda Bagley-Wiggs. And also I want to thank our amazing community engagement director, Trinity LaReno, for her enthusiastic work in organizing the forum and her great network today in getting the livestream going. We're trying some new software and I think we had it going about 10 minutes ago. I also want to thank our moderator, Andrea Oliver. Andrea is an experienced broadcaster who a lot of people in Lakeland know, and she knows Lakeland well. She was a host of our video conversation series called Lakeland Now in View, and she was news director for many years at Lakeland's Big Four radio station. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea to introduce the panelists.
Andrea, a very pleasant evening to you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Andrea Oliver, and once again, it is my privilege to be your moderator for this evening. Last night, we had a lively, spirited, respectable conversation featuring our candidates for mayor. Tonight, we hope to do the same, lively, spirited, respectable, as we have a conversation with our candidates who are running for the city commission. In a little while, I'll introduce you to the candidates, but I want to tell you a little bit about how the evening will roll out. So after I introduce you, we are going to allow you about two minutes to tell us why you should be the next candidate to sit on the two seats that are available. After that, we'll go into our question and answer section. You will have 90 seconds, and that beautiful lady sitting down there, we call her timekeeper Linda Bagley-Wiggs. She has, you saw that, a blue card and a red card. The blue card is a warning of sorts. It'll tell you that you have 20 seconds left to complete the question we asked you. And then, when the red card goes up, it means kaput. It's over, your time is done. And in the event, you do not stop at that time, you will hear a particular sound that will ring, will give an alarm, will tell you your time is over. And barring that, even if you decide to go beyond that point, we'll just cut your mic. How about that, Barry? That is how we will, we will professionally, if not, we'll just ask Barry to come back up here and lead. No, I'm just playing. We will not do that. So without further ado, I'd like, ladies and gentlemen, that's the sound. You heard the sound? It's the sound of the ma- no. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you to our four candidates. A reminder that Lakeland Commission candidates serve a four-year term. They can serve three consecutive terms for a total of 12 years. We have two seats available tonight, and we have four candidates vying. We believe that an informed electorate is a powerful electorate, and so we're hoping to give you the information tonight so that you can make the right choices for those two seats. I'm going to start with the incumbents tonight, and starting with Sarah Roberts-McCarly, born in Lakeland, raised in Davenport, and graduated from Florida Southern College. In her career, Sarah is dedicated to making a difference through her work with Best Buddies International. Developed a program that was implemented in high schools nationwide to enhance the lives of individuals with intellectual disabilities through friendship and engagement. Most recently, her role as executive director at Polk Vision heightened her commitment locally by building public-private partnerships to serve the community. She is dedicated to helping Lakeland. Her current community involvement includes work with the Harrison School for the Arts Panthrope Committee and Parent Association, Lakeland High School Parent Nominations Committee, and Alter Gill, the Lakeland Area Battalion Counselor, Leadership Lakeland Class Leading Leaders. After her first husband Randy passed away suddenly in 2009, Sarah converted her green was sworn in on January 22nd, 2019, and is commissioner for the Lakeland's Southwest District. Tonight, she is challenged, ladies and gentlemen, by Allison Al Lewis, who is an educator, social justice advocate, and political organizer. Raised by a mother, and Mom, it is so good to see you here tonight. Who worked as an educator for the city, Al learned at an early age the importance of hard work and the demands and rewards of fighting for our most vulnerable community residents. During the year, Al hosted several forums designed so that Lakeland community residents and local public officials could discuss equitable opportunity and racial issues in the community. Al focused on bridging the gap between the community residents and local public officials to ensure there'll be opportunities for all residents in the Lakeland community. She earned her undergraduate bachelor's of arts degree in sociology from Virginia State University, continued on to obtain her jurist doctorate degree, and is currently pursuing her master's in educational leadership and policy. As we go through this evening, I'd like to introduce the candidates for the District D Southeast seat. And this gentleman, or the two gentlemen that are sitting up here, seems like we were just here the other day. And starting with Mike Music, who is the owner of Music Construction and Roofing. He's lived in Lakeland for more than 40 years. He's a 1991 graduate of Lakeland Christian School, where he won multiple state championships as a member of the track team. We have that in common. Mike ran track myself. For the past 12 years, Mike has coached cross-country. Yes, he's married to Nikki Adele Music, a 1992 graduate of Lakeland High School. Nikki is in the house tonight. She serves as an assistant professor of nursing at Southeastern University. The couple has three college-age children, Erica, Remington, and Britton, who, her name actually was named for the country or for the region. Mike currently serves as a deacon and member of the Mission's Committee at Heritage Baptist Church. He serves on the Board of Directors at Camp Gilead in Polk County, as a group leader for Christians for World Royal Evangelism, and founded Leverage Ministries, Lakeland-based nonprofit serving underprivileged youth. In the past, Mike has served on the zoning board adjustments and appeals, as well as the Lakeland Historic Board, as we mentioned. It seems as if we were just here because Mike became a commission member when he won a special election to fill the vacancy left by Representative Scott Franklin, who was elected to Congress. His challenger tonight, Dr. Chandel Terrell. It's good to see you guys back here again. Was born and raised in Lakeland. Currently, Dr. Terrell is an educator for K-12 Polk County Public Schools. Dr. Terrell's educational credentials, he has a bachelor of science degree from Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University, majored in education, a master of science degree in education leadership from Dover Southeastern University, and a doctoral degree in education with a concentration in higher education leadership, mining, and urban education from Dover Southeastern University. Dr. Terrell has been a lifelong servant leader to the Lakeland community in from serving as an educator in the K-12 Polk County Public School District, active involvement with the Lakeland Chamber of Commerce, and sits on several task forces, including one to protect our community as a member of the City of Lakeland Gang Task Force Committee, several affiliations, served on the City of Lakeland Citizens Advisory Board, served on the City of Lakeland Budget Advisory Committee, and several more committees as well. I really appreciate you being here tonight. And as I mentioned, I was going to give you two minutes, are you ready, Ms. Linda Bagley-Wiggs, to tell us why you should be the next commissioner. I am going to start with the incumbents. And so, Ms. McCarly, if you will, tell us why you should be. And feel free to sit, stand, anything that's comfortable to you.
Well, thank you. I want to thank Lakeland Now, Trinity, and Barry for pulling this together. I think it's really important to have an engaged citizenry and our voters to really be able to get to know each and every one of us. I've had the honor and privilege of serving the City of Lakeland the last three years. I fulfilled a special election in January of 2019 and was elected then. And I've learned so much over the last three years about our community as far as how the city government works. I think you should vote for me, and I would covet your vote because I've learned a lot and I've learned the nuance of how to work between public and private partnerships that can serve the community at large. I also have been pushing extensively for transparency in our finances at City Hall to make sure that our property taxpayers understand what happens and how their money gets pulled in and then reassigned out into the community so that we have such a high standard of living and quality of life. And I also want to be reelected so I can maintain the great quality of life that we do have here along with public safety and equity. So I want to make sure that everyone is heard in the City of Lakeland and that we have good engagement. I've worked my whole career for community engagement. The Randy Roberts Foundation engages young people into servant leadership, and it's something that I'm really passionate about. I think we're only as good as our constituents, letting us know what they need, and us going out into the community and listening to those varying voices. So I hope that you'll consider voting for me on November 2nd. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you, and I'd love to continue to do so.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Your challenger tonight, District C Southwest, is Allison Al Lewis. And Al, as I think you like to be called, tell us why you should be the next commissioner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, I am Allison Al Lewis. I am running for Southwest District C seat because, as we know, Lakeland is growing, and we should all, it starts with opportunity. We need more education so the people can have better-paying jobs. Better-paying jobs leads to more money. More money leads to a great quality of life, public safety. Everyone wants to feel safe where they live, work, play, and worship. Our first responders will need to increase due to the growth, but they should be held accountable and everyone should be treated equally. Crime, we want to keep that crime low because we must strategically analyze crime. That's with data, policy, budget recommendations, reducing a sense of hopelessness and poverty, and ensuring equitable opportunities for all. More affordable housing. We need more affordable housing, but we must also ensure that the people have a livable wage to not just pay their rent or mortgage, but to enjoy life too. The arts. I'm a proud graduate of Harrison School for the Arts. Go Harrison. The arts is strictly important. They're just as equally important as they are to sports. And we need to increase that not only visually, but organizationally for all the aspects of the arts and our youth. Give these children something to do. They will lead, they are the future. More entrepreneurship programs and more technology programs for them. And last but not least, our seniors. We must take care of our seniors. They're the staple in this community. Give them more pro- active, give them more programs to keep them active, but also keep them safe. But they also need, what they also need is to ensure that they have a livable wage to live as well. And that's why you should vote for me because I'm ready to serve the people. I have been serving the people, and we need people to represent everyone. Thank you. Vote for Al.
Thank you so much, Al. Moving right along, and Mr. Music, we'd like to hear from you again. I know you told us back in March, but as you contend for that District D Southeast seat, tell us why we should send you back to that post.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody that is here, both in person and those that are doing this online. You know, it's interesting because we were just here, and you know, so my experience is very, very new from the city management level. But I will tell you, there's a couple of reasons why you should reelect me, and one of them is just my experience fiscally. What I do for a living is to make sure that jobs are done, jobs are completed, jobs are on budget, and that the homeowner or the business owner is completely satisfied when they're done. And that is very difficult. You know, we probably will do somewhere around 400 jobs throughout the year. So you're talking about multiple every day. As far as, as far as people who have gotten behind me, right? So as we're looking and saying, well, why should we choose you again? Why should we reelect you? Well, first of all, one thing that I don't do is I don't just look to my right, look to my left, and ask how, you know, see how my fellow commissioners voted and said, okay, I'll go with it. I challenge, I ask questions. Fiscally is my cornerstone. Because if everybody here is, and everybody that's watching feels secure in our fire and our police, then the next thing is fiscal. Are we okay? We're paying a lot of money in taxes and fees, is that used properly? You know, second of all, are the people who have endorsed me throughout our community from a business side, the Chamber of Commerce Business Voice. From our safety standpoint, both the police and fire unions have supported. My, probably got a couple more, and I'm trying to think of who they might be. Oh, the Lakeland Association of Realtors and the Builders Association, so.
Mr. Music, you have 20 seconds.
I have 20 seconds, thank you. So, so listen, everybody, you know, what you said is important. Educate yourself, watch the video, read the news, see what you can do to learn about somebody, and vote November 2nd.
Thank you so ver- there you go, and thank you so very much. Mr. Music, you have a very passionate challenger. You had him back when you were contesting the seat, and he is back again and ready to give you a run for your money, as we say. So, Dr. Terrell, if you would, tell us why you should be the next city commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chandel Terrell, and I have a passion and dedication to improve the workforce and labor deficit, recover from the pandemic, enhance the infrastructure within the City of Lakeland, provide economic opportunities for small businesses, there's support programs for our youth to be productive citizens in our great community. As stated, I attend the K-12 schools here, earn my educational credentials at institutions of higher education. But more importantly, I serve as the chairman of the Police Citizens Lakeland Advisory Board, where I'm the chairman, and that board was formed before the special election took place. And our number one priority was the Lakeland Police Contract Agreement and the body cameras. Number two, I was one of the original appointees for the City of Lakeland Gang Task Force that took place in 2013, 14, where we had the issues on Brunel and Jewell. And we hounded that community, let the constituents know that we care, and we did a circulation quarterly to make sure that we depressed the gang violence that took place there. Also served on the City of Lakeland Citizens Advisory Committee. I also served on the City of Lakeland Budget Advisory Committee, where we analyzed the whole budget for that fiscal year within the City of Lakeland. And I also served on the City of Lakeland Police Youth Athlete League Board of Directors for five years, working with our inner-city youth and the Lakeland Urban Corps. And I served on the Polk County Board of County Commissioners, Community Relations Advisory Council as a board member, vice-chairman, and chairman, where we analyzed budgets there too within the Polk County Board of County Commissioners. And the reason why you should vote for me, I have 20 years of experiences serving on these boards and committees. They, basically, when you serve on these boards and committees, they show you the internal and external functions.
Dr. Terrell, you have 20 seconds.
Yeah, yeah, it won't be long. Okay. The reason why I served on these boards and committees for 20 years is because they show you the internal and external functions of government, local, county, state, and federal. So that's the reason why I should earn your vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so, ladies and gentlemen, you've just heard from the four commissioners. We are going to move into a session of question and answer, and hopefully a little bit later on, depending on how this works. I'm so sorry, I have a thing with my throat, not a good thing for a speaker to have. We will be fielding some questions from our audience online. Al, you mentioned this when you talked earlier. You talked about growth in the city, that we should be looking to embrace growth. And this question will be, and in no random order, the questions, but each of you will answer the question. So, but I'm starting with you, Al, because you talked about growth. So Lakeland Now often reports news about new projects in towns. Some examples are the new downtown structures, such as the Summit Building on Lake Miro, a new subdivision in Southwest Lakeland, or large new warehouses. Quite often, the Facebook comments about these articles show a stark division between those who welcome the growth as a sign of economic vibrancy and those who worry that Lakeland is losing its small-town charm. What's your attitude on growth versus small-town charm?
Well, the thing is, as time goes, you want things to change, and as they should. I'm very proud of the growth that Lakeland is making, and I think we all should embrace it. However, the thing that I have is this, let's educate the people because there are a lot of people who feeling that they're being, oh, it's, the city is, I'm transparent. The city is growing so rapidly, but a lot of them, they're not, they don't have the access to the opportunity due to the education. That's why education is so important. And we have a community college, we have Polk State Community College, and we have Career Source Polk, who works and trains the people so they can have more higher-paying jobs because that increases their monies and so they can have a better quality of life. And so I believe that's where it comes from, but there's nothing to be afraid of. I love the growth of the city. I want to continue to grow upon the city because it's good. As time grows, things should change. But remember, the thing with people is, they're afraid of, some people are afraid of the opportunity, or certain democrats are afraid of the opportunity that is growing is because of the education. And so we need to instill in people, listen, get out there, more educational opportunities so therefore they can have access to the opportunities that are out there and so they can make the money to have a better quality of life to grow with Lakeland.
Thank you so much. Mr. Music, I'm going to ask you the very same question. Would you like me to?
I don't mind, yes.
Okay, I don't mind at all. So as we mentioned, we cover a lot of articles at Lakeland Now featuring growth and different developments in the area, and the comments on Facebook have been varied about what these growth things look like. So we want to know your vision or view on economic vibrancy and those that are worrying that it's losing its small-town charm. Are you sharing that view? What's your attitude on growth versus small-town charm?
Okay, thank you. So let me address small-town charm first. When you talk about small-town charm, go down to our Saturday Farmer's Market, right? Go walk around some of these buildings, go walk around any of our lakes, and I think we've been able to capture that and keep that. That's number one, but let's talk about growth. We have to grow. Everybody knows if you don't grow, you die, or you stay stagnant, which doesn't lead to anything positive. So I like the fact that every year, I try to make my business grow. When my children were young, I wanted them to grow. And I think that the same thing is with us as a city and with us as individuals. I want all of us to grow. And I certainly would echo what Al said, but I would take it a little bit of a step farther. It was, it's a little bit embarrassing to me as I sit up here and I hear all of everybody's educational credentials because I didn't finish college. You know, I went to Florida State and on an athletic scholarship, and after two years realized that just wasn't for me. So I went and I started my own business, and here I am. But we do have to educate, and we get to do great things in this town by things like the well. It is a different type of education. It's an incubator, and what is an incubator for? An incubator is to promote growth, and those are the things that I want to get behind, and that's what Lakeland's all about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Terrell, your thoughts on the growth and are we losing our small-town charm?
No, I don't believe we're losing our small-town charm. From, this used to be the fire department when I was a child. Botson Hound was where BB&amp;T was located, Black and Blue, that was Soul Train. And growth took place, transformation took place, redevelopment took place, which is great, and we need that. Redevelopment is the most important thing, in my opinion, because when we develop, we preserve nature in the lands. Now, when we, when we want to build a business, we need to make sure that it's not in the center part of a neighborhood that's going to disenfranchise the minority or the non-minority. We need to make sure that the business is conducive to the residents there, and we need to analyze the data before we build. That's my personal opinion on that. But we need to make sure that we stay in the black and not the red as far as when we build and the growth. So we need to just analyze the data and the numbers and make sure we do it strategically.
Thank you so much. Sarah, are we losing our small-town charm, or is growth necessary to where Lakeland needs to be and to go?
Well, I first want to say that the state of Florida is growing by thousands of residents every day. We are a state where people who are leaving the Northeast, they're leaving out West, and they're coming into our state, and Lakeland is extraordinarily attractive to a lot of people to come here. We're on the I-4 corridor. We are strategically placed between Tampa and Orlando, so we have the benefit of being at either coast in an hour and a half if traffic is okay. We can go and fly out of two international airports pretty easily, so Lakeland is prime for growth. I agree that we have wonderful pockets of that small-town feel that continues. Our neighborhoods are the backbone of the community at large. We have several neighborhoods, historic and newer neighborhoods, that where people care for one another and they're engaged with their neighbors and they support one another. And I think maintaining that is a critical component and something that I talk about regularly with the City Commission. But I will get into the policy here for just a second, is the growth that you explained, the new development that's out on Pipkin Road, Riverstone, which is huge, about 1,300 rooftops, that was approved in 2017. So for the public perspective is, although this growth feels fast and that it's coming at us really quickly, in government, it actually moves at a glacial pace. So just knowing that, I see my 22nd mark, is that this happens with public involvement being a part of the commission agendas and paying attention to agenda studies and seeing it ahead of time.
All right, thank you so very much. We're going to move on, and Dr. Terrell, you talked about affordable housing, and I'd like to start with you as we pose the next question. We keep seeing new subdivisions and apartments being built, but we also keep hearing that Lakeland does not have sufficient housing for people of all income levels. So what should the city do to ensure affordable housing for all economic sectors?
We need to make sure that we have community forums to educate residents there. In addition to making sure they understand the functions and the budgetary concerns of mortgage, property, ownership, and all those departments as far as owning a home, which is very important as far as affordable housing. We need to make sure that we have the allocated land and funds to have affordable housing and make sure that it's conducive to the residents and their jobs, their occupations, because you save a lot of money that way, and they can give back to the businesses as far as the economy concerns.
Thank you so much. Al, I'm going to pose the same question to you because I know this is something you mentioned as you talked at your platform about affordable housing. So what should the city do to ensure affordable housing for all economic sectors?
Well, listen, so the city is growing, and so you are going to do one or two things. Increase the more affordable housing, the livable wage, that is the issue that we're having. We have to balance this thing out. So you have the people making a certain wage, but the rent is $1,800, $1,700 to $1,800. So you either raise that livable wage to meet the regular market rent rate, or you ensure that there is enough housing that's conducive to people's living wage and able to be affordable, be able to live. Because at the end of the day, when I look at the north side over here and I think about Lincoln Square Court, you had over 120 apartment units that got conduced down to 21 homes. And I know there was nobody on this committee, but at the end of the day, when you, when you take someone from the City of Lakeland, well, from the City of Lakeland, living in that town, not on the commission, not inside the building, like Dr. Terrell said, more forums, inform the people, communicate that to the people, because you have people out here stating, oh, I don't have enough, I don't have enough housing. They're pushing me out. Well, that is, that is a representative job to explain to them exactly what's going on.
And you have 20 seconds.
Well, thank you, ma'am. So what I say is, either we raise the livable wage, or what we do is, we make the apartments affordable to people's earning wage that they have now.
I can feel you chomping at the bit, Sarah, so I'm going to let you answer that very quickly.
See her energy.
I see that. So, what are your thoughts? What, what should the city do to ensure?
So I'll tell you what the city has done. So over the last three years, affordable housing, actually the last four, four years, the year before I was on the commission, affordable housing was a priority, and the commission that was there decided that this was going to be a priority for the city of Lakeland, which I believe is why we're speaking of it now, is because there were several organizations that came to the city and said, listen, we need more affordable housing for people who are lowing, who are living below the poverty line. And then in addition to that, we actually need to have affordable housing for teachers, and law enforcement professionals, and people who do earn a good living but can't afford to live in town. So, one of the things that we have done is, we have worked to put a line item to help encourage development for affordable housing. So when a developer comes to town, we just broadened our parameters of where affordable housing can be, and we approved that several weeks ago now, and we're really excited about that as our comprehensive plan. So there are more land opportunities around the community where affordable housing can go. We were limited before with a smaller speck, speck of land. And then our Community and Economic Development Group has actually inventoried vacant lots throughout the city over the last two years. So, this is something that of course is a high priority for us, and we have worked very diligently to make sure it can maintains, regardless of who's on the commission, that it is a number one priority.
Mike, you've talked about being a citizen of Lakeland for over forty years, and I'm sure you've witnessed the growth, being here as a local businessman. Sitting on the commission as you are right now, what are your thoughts about what the city needs to do to ensure affordable housing for its residents?
Yes, so when we moved here in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, you know, my dad was making less than five thousand dollars a year, um, and was, was underpaid as a teacher most of his life, so this, this rings very, very true to me. And now I have three college-age kids, actually, one just graduated, and he's, he's gonna be in a position where he has to find a place. So when I'm out looking for rent, it scares me to death when I'm seeing these numbers that we're talking about, because I'm like, how on earth can somebody do that, right? You know, um, my wife and I have been living in the same house for a long time. For us, as our income went up, the, the housing may have gone up, but we didn't notice it. I shouldn't say noticed, it didn't affect us. So, what, uh, and I'm really echoing, um, Sarah's comments, is, is the city is doing such a great job. In fact, we just had a developer come to us, uh, for a proposal, and part of that, we are, um, encouraging him as the, as the delegate, as the, the, the back and forth goes, going to give fifteen percent, possibly more, of the units for affordable housing. Now, remember, it costs, if I'm gonna build a town center, it's gonna take as much money to build a market rent as it is a reduced rent. So, we're working very hard as a commission with individuals who are coming to develop, and will increase that amount for low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate your responses, um, regarding that particular issue. Clearly, and especially for the two who are currently sitting on the commission, you would possibly give the commission an A grade for how it's handling housing and, um, uh, low-income housing in the city. The question turns to COVID-19, and Sarah, I'm gonna start with you. Did the city respond responsibly to keep citizens safe from the spread of COVID-19 over the last year and a half? What should or should not have happened? Should Lakeland have joined, uh, other central Florida cities that pushed back against Governor DeSantis's order this year, restricting local governments from enacting restrictions?
Well, thank you for that. I think we're not quite ready for a postmortem on our COVID, since we still are in, in essence, in a pandemic currently. But I'll say this, I'll say that in the height, when you look back at March twentieth, twenty twenty, to now, I think we were doing the best we could with the knowledge that we had at the present moment. And it's something that, when, until you're in a leadership role and you sit on the dais, it's really easy to Monday morning quarterback this, and it's really easy to say, well, we would, we should, we would, we could. We're still not even knowing how this thing spreads, and we might have multiple variants coming out. I don't think we should have pushed against Governor DeSantis. I think that we were looking at the Lakeland numbers and doing the best we had at the time, and had our mask mandate, and we're encouraging vaccines. I think the community came together to promote vaccines incredibly in the city of Lakeland, which even with Polk County opening sites, we were able to get vaccines out as quick as humanly possible, and I really felt confident in our emergency management leaders in doing that. So I think that we did the absolute best that we could with what we knew then. Obviously, I would like to take time, maybe in the next six months, as not only a commission, but a staff at the city of Lakeland, and look back. Because I do think we need to de, we need to pull it apart and see what we could have done better, knowing what we know now.
All right, thank you so much. And Mike, I know you came in, in the middle of all of this, but, uh, your thoughts in the city's response to COVID?
Yeah, it was interesting. So we moved, um, office locations right at the beginning of March. We signed a new lease, and I said, you know, I was telling the, the team, I said, you know, this COVID thing might be something. So we're gonna go ahead and take a week off, and we're just gonna move from one location to the other and kind of, kind of see what happens. And, and I'll tell you, praise the Lord, we have done nothing but grow during this pandemic. So from a, from a personal note, I've hired three additional people. So, so we have worked very hard to do what we could inside of the parameters, but that's not your question. The question is, how do I feel that we handled it? I always am going to default to the person being able to make a better decision for themselves than, uh, than a municipality or a government. So, I probably would have been a dissenting voice, had I been able to give the choice, uh, and been able to do that. Now, my mother is, uh, we lost our, our father in January, my, my mother, um, is, I won't tell you her age, but, but I have, I have encouraged her, um, to go and make sure that she is taken care of. But that's all I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna encourage. It's tough, because it's easy to say, I wouldn't have thrown that pass, right? It's easy to say, I would have taken that hit, um, or I wouldn't have taken that hit. So I'm not gonna sit here and bash anybody that made those decisions, but I have to say that I probably would have defaulted back to letting the individual make the decision.
I appreciate your comment. Um, Dr. Terrell, and as if he knew I was gonna call him, you notice he jumped up. You are challenging this man for that seat, which tells me you believe that you can do a better job. So I want you to tell me your thoughts on whether you think the city passed the COVID-19 responses. And the second part of that question, should we have joined other central Florida cities that pushed back against Governor DeSantis's order this year, restricting local governments from enacting restrictions?
No, I don't believe we shouldn't have pushed back, uh, the governor's restrictions at all. I believe we should have followed the CDC guidelines, the city did a great job with the circumstances of the unknown. I believe people, I believe the constituents have choices, but when you have a mask, a mask not locally, on the city level, but not even the county level, not the state level, but in the United States, in the world, just people dying, uh, with, with the unknown taking place, you're gonna take, uh, uh, super, uh, super, super measures to make sure that the constituents can stay safe. So I think the city, uh, Lakeland Commission did a great job, uh, following the CDC guidelines. Um, I knew, I know, uh, the masks are tough sometimes, because I had to wear them too. At that point in time, I had to wear a mask, I didn't like wearing a mask. I questioned, uh, getting the, uh, COVID-19 shot, one and two, but I did it in April and in June. Uh, I consulted with a good friend of mine, and I prayed about it, but I went ahead and did it, and I still wear a mask, just in case. Uh, until these numbers are really, really flattened, because it's not over until it's really over. And that's what everybody has to understand. Yes, ma'am, when you have family members that died, you know, I'm talking about near you, and friends, close friends that you just recently saw, uh, I believe the city of Lakeland did a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Al, uh, I think it was, uh, Mike who referred to, um, Monday morning quarterbacking, or maybe Sarah. You're hoping that the citizens will put you on the commission, you're not there yet, but the question, did the Lakeland city government handle the COVID cases here, or handle the issues of COVID properly? Did they do well? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, again, when this pandemic, it came to us March twenty twenty, we was hearing stuff about it, November twenty nineteen and all that. So it hit us dead in the face, like, imagine a baseball, a pitcher throwing you a fast baseball, he's in the face of it. That, that's the reaction that I'm quite sure everyone, uh, received. So, how they handled it, I mean, everybody did their research, they did, they did well with what, the information that they did have. I'm an educator, I see over a hundred and eighty students a day, and on a good day, a hundred and ninety of them decides to come into my classroom. So, again, in my district where I teach, they are requiring masks until October thirtieth. And I get emails every single day where students are affected with COVID-19. And so, I, I would say, make your own decisions, wear your own health, but we also have to be mindful and respectful of others as well, because it's not over till it's over. I've had both of my grandfathers, this, lots of my, I had a friend of mine that I grew up in church with, gone like that. So, once you start seeing that, and it start hitting close to home, you begin to really take great precaution. So, again, I would say, do what's best for your health, do what's best for you.
Keep standing, if you don't mind, yes. I, I, I can tell that you're very passionate, you're passionate about your city, you're passionate about, uh, the things you believe in. And so I want to ask you, what does citizen engagement mean to you? Are there any further steps that city government should take to make sure all citizens feel involved and that they can be heard?
Absolutely, I'm glad you asked that, yes, Oliver. So listen, um, I started Call to Consciousness back in June twenty twenty, in the wake of George Floyd. And I gathered city officials and community residents, CEOs, and we had a conversation. I, I like talking about those tough conversations and being transparent with them. Because I talked about racial issues that we face here in the city. And during those, and I did lots of them, one on education, we did a, a, a great number of them. But one thing I found out is, people want to be heard. Not only do they want to be heard, but they want to ensure that you're going to take their considerations in, and do something about, about it. That is why I started this conversation, not just about race, but a multi of issues that we face as residents, to bridge that gap, to let, because there are some community residents, ladies and gentlemen, have no idea what a commission does, at all. And I think it's highly imperative that as a representative of, on the commission of your district, you should have these conversations, go into those neighborhoods where you don't feel comfortable.
Twenty seconds.
And, and, and get to know your, get to know the district, and allow the people to, to see that they are being heard, and that's all. And that's how you bring in the, uh, residents, they are being heard.
Thank you so much, and I believe she could preach, if you would, um, if you would allow her. Sarah, I'm gonna ask you the very same thing, what does citizen engagement mean to you? And what can the city government do so that residents feel heard?
Well, one of the things I do in my spare time is run the Randy Roberts Foundation that you mentioned earlier, and our mission is to cultivate Florida's future leaders. And a couple, we do that through a couple ways, we've been in existence now since two thousand nine, and what we do is recruit high school students to learn more about their city government, their state government, and their federal government. We've taken over a hundred and twenty kids to DC for the last twelve years to learn how the federal government works. Last year, because of COVID, we pivoted and did a community classroom. And that was really important to us, because then we were teaching our local students, high school students, about how city governments work. The interesting thing about city governments is, there's no curricula base for city government, because every city runs differently, every county runs differently. You might have a mayor form of government, you might have different ways people are elected and be represented. So really, teaching the young people how the system works, I think is really helpful, because they actually take that back home to their parents, and then they talk about how to be engaged. So, one of the things I think that the city does is, and that should continue to do, is reach out. Our social media has worked really well on getting feedback, since Facebook and Instagram have come into play. We see so many comments of things we might not know. I mean, I've seen comments about neighborhoods that come in through that. So we hear them, and we see them, and we work through our neighborhood coalition as well.
Thank you so very much. Mike, I'm gonna pose the same question, what does citizen engagement mean to you? And what can city government do so that its, uh, residents feel heard?
Thank you, yeah. So, you know, one of the things that, that I talked a lot about in, in the, in the first, uh, race here, was making sure that there was transparency, right? Where it, it feels like we're reading a lot of things after the fact. Well, what was interesting is, as I, as I won the election and got in, I realized that a lot of this, if not all of this information, is out there, but I have to be engaged, right? So it really goes, it really goes a couple of different rays. Like, the city is responsible for making that information available, and the citizens are responsible for engaging. I think that's, that's number one, and we, every single meeting that we have as, as a commission, um, because of the Sunshine Law, it's open to the public, anybody can come, that's all of our agenda studies, and then that's our city commission meetings. But, but I think that it's, it's grander than that, so I would step it back a little bit, and say that what I do is, when I'm out walking the neighborhoods, and yes, I'm, I'm District D, but, but I, city is my boundary, right? Just like you were saying, it's, it's the city, so when I go and walk and I engage, and, and my wife and I love barbecue, so we will drive all over the city and find different, and every time we do, we talk about the city and we ask them. The city also has a great app, that if you go down your street and you see a street light out, take a picture of it, and it, you can track it all the way from inception to completion. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And Dr. Terrell, the same question. What does citizen engagement mean to you, and what can city government do so that its residents feel heard?
Uh, I believe the city, city government did a great job. They had three phases of Lift Lakeland. The first initiative was when all the pastors were invited to Mum Park, and they gave a prayer. This was during the George Floyd, uh, incident, and that was a great, uh, civic, uh, community engagement. A lot of the community leaders came out, residents came out across far and wide within the city of Lakeland. That was the first phase of Lift Lakeland. Uh, the second phase of Lift Lakeland was around Lake Miriam, if I'm pronouncing that right. So, uh, that was the second phase, and that was another opportunity for residents and, uh, religious institutions, uh, to come around and, uh, lift Lakeland up during that time. And then they had a third, Part Three of Lift Lakeland at the RP Funding Center, and I attended all three. And, uh, that was when the residents wanted to be heard about concerns, job opportunities, and, and minority community, and so forth. And I am, I am always engaged, in and out of season. I'm invited to neighborhood association meetings, uh, to listen to the residents' concerns. I serve on various boards and committees, uh, for the past twenty years, understanding the, uh, yes, ma'am, understanding the local, understand, uh, the government's concerns and the residents' concerns. And if I need to, uh, make a connection with the commission, I will, to make sure that that, uh, message is heard.
Thank you so very much. I, I, I want to thank you guys, because you're really doing well on time, and I can, I guess we could call this Part B of that earlier question. So, um, Al, you, you mentioned the conversations that started, uh, especially in light of the George Floyd incident. And Sarah, I'm, I'm gonna start with you. So, um, the question, issues of diversity have been in many recent conversations in several forums throughout the city. What does the terminology signify for you, and what, if anything, will you do to represent diversity in our community, and in particular, among residents who feel marginalized?
So, I, last summer, I think our, um, RP Funding Forum that Al was a part of, and several other leaders were a part of, was really, really important, and it really gave people an opportunity to come. I will tell you that the morning after George Floyd happened, um, we had a strategic planning meeting or a budget meeting for the city of Lakeland, and Commissioner Madden, Commissioner Walker, and I all walked in together. And Commissioner Madden and I were in tears, because we all, we both have sons, and so she has a lot more sons than I do, she has five, I just have one. But, um, we thought, our lives are so different and look so different, and those mothers have to worry about something differently than what we have to worry about as, as white people. And so we had a really candid conversation with Commissioner Walker. So I think for me, um, growing up in Davenport, going to Haynes City High School, um, I've had friends, um, of all different backgrounds, and I was blessed to go to public school. And so that was something that my parents really instilled in us, as being a good neighbor to all. My dad coached Little League with very diverse teams, and so it was never, it's not a new thought to me. However, I do think my awareness is so much more heightened, and I know in the programming I've done with the foundation, is we've been very, very inclusive of trying to have different types of thought, background, and people.
I, I, I really appreciate you talking about having sons, and, um, very much respect your, your thoughts. I, it, it is very difficult to live something that you've never been, and I don't believe that any, uh, of your experience will ever match what a black mother, what a black mother would feel. With that said, um, Al, I'm going to ask you the very same question. Issues of diversity have been in many recent conversations in several forums throughout the city. You mentioned earlier about spearheading several of those conversations. So if you would, in your turn, words, tell us what the terminology signifies for you, and what, if anything, you would do to represent diversity in our community, and in particular, among residents who feel marginalized?
Absolutely. So, when we, when we talk about this thing called diversity, there is multi-faces to diversity. But the one we keep, we're, we're still at, and that is race. And when I think about diversity, and I think about race, because you have a group here in Lakeland, um, there's Um, there's, there's a demographic here in Lakeland. And we, and I'm gonna go ahead and break the ice. It's the Black Lives Matter movement. And it's looked at when you, when you have these certain movements and it's an outcry for stating, we want equality, equality and justice. And when it's continuously backed with far-left terrorist group and hate, that's where that division comes in at. But in reality, the only thing that we have been stating far as with the black, I'mma, I'mma go, I'mma go there, far as with the Black Lives Matter movement is saying, hey, we want equality, equality and justice. So what we need to do to come together as an understanding and at a table and, and without our preconceived notions and open ourselves up and truly want to understand another person's background. Because when you come with, oh, that's nothing but a far-left group or that, that's nothing but a hate group, we're right there. You're met with. And so we, as Lakeland residents, we have to be willing to open our minds and open our hearts and, and decrease ourself and our preconceived notions and listen to the other people. Therefore, we can truly be one Lakeland. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Al. Uh, is she passionate or what? Uh, Dr. Terrell, the very same question. What does diversity means to you? And I'm, and I appreciate that Al mentioned it, race, but it wasn't just about race. And so what does it signify for you? And should you land on the city commission, what would you do to, uh, in particular, help, uh, those voices and those people that feel marginalized?
Diversity, what it mean to me, uh, I can honestly tell you the only sport are sports. Uh, that there, that where you don't see no color, pretty much, is football. I'm talking about you're in the crowds, you're in the stands, you're cheering the same team on, if it's your team. Uh, if you have teammates, uh, like I have, was very diverse. Uh, that's the only time you don't see color. But, uh, it's a transition. When you grow up as an Afro-American male and you're a superstar, you know? They don't, you don't see, they don't see no color. But then when you enter into the workforce, that's when the, uh, I can tell, I can say the shades come off and then you see color, you know, uh, and it's not everybody. I don't judge, uh, I don't judge everybody the same, you know? I don't, you know, I don't believe in, uh, I really don't see color at all. It's just that I just wish we had more unity. Uh, that's the only way I grew up as, my late father Leroy Tarrell and my mother. Uh, that's the only way they brought me up. So the, the way that the commission can reach out to the, uh, to the constituents in the city of Lakeland is to go to their neighborhood associations, to all of them if they possibly can, and, uh, just show unity and diversity there.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Mike, you, you mentioned that you ran track and, um, uh, of course, Dr. Terrell talked about his sport, football. And, uh, I'm not sure what this word means to you, how you view it, but as a commission member currently, and if should you return to the seat, what will you do in particular to help those who might feel marginalized?
Yeah. So, so again, there's always so much packed in these questions. Um, and I agree, she could preach. Um, you know, so, so diversity is, diversity is what? Diversity is difference. We're different. Are we different economically? Are we different, um, social? Are we different in color? And you know, one of the, one of the difficult things about that for me is on January twenty ninth nineteen seventy-two, I was born a white guy. And when the Lord calls me home, it will be as a white guy. So while there's very, very few things that I'm ever going to be able to look and relate actually to someone of a different color. But what I can do is I can be intentional about how I interact with them. I grew up in track and field. And that is a, i- if, if you're a sprinter, you're black. If you are a distance runner, you might be black. And my point is, is so I, I grew up with, with, with a diversity in my life, but that doesn't mean that I was intentional to look across at the person and acknowledge them for who they are and for the struggles they have had, because they certainly have, as have I and my wife. But diversity is about difference. It's about being intentional. And as an individual and as a city commissioner, I will fight hard to get to know you and to include you the best I can.
Thank you so very much. We're gonna move and, and I'm, I'm gonna start with you, Mike. We're, wanna talk about transportation alternatives. And is enough being done to make the city walkable and bicycle friendly? If not, would you advocate moving dollars out of other departments to improve sidewalks and add bike lanes?
Moving dollars is tough. Um, you know, that, that's a, that's a difficult thing for sure. But we just had a great, um, presentation at the city commission for a, a Lake Hunter Trail. Starts over on Arianna, goes all the way around the lake and goes up so that it can connect, um, Bonnet Springs Park area to this. This is what I love about our city is we are forward-thinking. We're looking and saying, we're going to build this. This is in an interesting part of town that we haven't really had anything like this before. How can we move and get people there?
Mm-hmm.
From a budgetary standpoint, I am just, I'm so fiscally tight that to look and say, would, would I move money? Maybe I would move money if I could be convinced that where I'm moving it from is okay. One of the interesting things, and this came back up at the end, um, of our last budget meeting is at, at the end of our fiscal year, we actually found out that we had some extra money. Um, fee, fee, more fee money came in, more tax dollars came in. So we had more money at the end of the year that we didn't. And, and that, that helped us apply some of the things to our budget. That's where I would like to see it. When you have a seven hundred-plus million-dollar budget, we can probably take a microscope.
You have twenty seconds.
And find some things here or there to be able to tweak that to do it. But, but movability of people is paramount. It's huge. As we're growing, we've gotta be able to get from A to B without being frustrated. And I know a lot of us are. Thank you.
Dr. Terrell, you really do have to wait until I call you. Dr. Terrell. And so, the, is, is enough being done to make the city walkable and bicycle friendly? If not, would you advocate moving dollars out of other operations to improve sidewalks and add to, add bike lanes?
Yes, I believe, uh, City of Lakeland Commission has done a great job, uh, providing great sidewalks and bike lanes. But they can always be improved and enhanced. Uh, as far as moving dollars, uh, the money, it, it's a, it's a process because you just can't move money by law. Uh, you gotta make sure those funds are, 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 are free in order to move. Uh, because some funds are restricted, uh, within the City, City of Lakeland Commission. So that's very important to know. But as far as moving the dollars, as long as they're allowed to be moved and we gotta be accountable for them. And if we're gonna stay in the black, yes, I would do that. But we have to make sure that is done responsibly and, uh, making sure that is done respectfully, respectful, respectfully, uh, to the constituents and the tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Sarah?
So as the Chair of the Polk County Transit Authority right now in Lakeland Area Mass Transit, you know, this is a question that I enjoy. Um, I agree with Dr. Terrell. We can't just magically move money about the city budget. It's a little more strenuous than that. But I will say that as we continue to grow, that traffic, when we talked earlier about growth and more and more people coming into Lakeland, that we do have to take a, a bigger view of how do we move about? You know, do we use the public transit system a little bit more right now? That's something that would have to be a behavioral shift. Everybody who travels, um, and people in this room who have been to Washington DC and ridden the metro or to New York City and ridden the subway or the bus system, you know, that's a part that was in, built into their infrastructure many, like hundreds of years ago. So we have to really look at, we started out as an agriculture community and we were very spread out, which is why we have a challenge in connectivity is historically looking at the backside of it. But what we need to do is continue to, to bridge sidewalks, which we're doing. We have a sidewalk budget. And then we also need to look at public transit opportunities. And in addition to that, we do have plans to connect more and more people with bike lanes and encourage pedestrian traffic. Some of that is education, education on how to use, you know, walk across the streets in a safe manner.
Twenty seconds.
I saw that. Thank you. And, um, so walk across the street in a safe manner. I sit in car line at Lakeland High School every morning. So really using those crosswalks is important. Education's a big piece of this.
Thank you so much. Um, when I came to Lakeland, um, a few years ago, um, I could not drive and, but I walked a lot. I worked at a place called Moss Brothers. So anybody, that's how long I, yes. I worked at Moss Brothers and I lived in the downtown area. And I remember walking to work and thinking, I will die because there were no lanes. So, Al, if you would, the very same question.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna concur with what they're saying as far as with the budget, because again, you just can't start just moving money around. But as the city grows, we have to look at transportation, because people, that is a main concern for people. And everybody don't like to drive, especially when you have a lot of northerners coming down. They want to ride their bicycles. They want to walk. Um, they want to catch the public transit. I remember when I was in DC, I never drove my car. I was always on the city bus showing my, showing my ID card. Need a ride, need a ride. But anyways, so, so yes, um, or as I, should I be elected? I will definitely look at that because that is a main concern for the people is the transportation. Uh, because there are many, like I said, there are many facets of transportation. Some people wanna ride their bicycles. Some people wanna, want to walk. Everybody don't wanna drive their car. So yes, I concur. Let's look at, let's look at that budget. Um, and also let's continue to create more ways as people maneuver throughout the city as the city grows.
Thank you. Sarah, I'm gonna pose, let you start this next one. And, and, and of course, since we're talking about transportation, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about what's going on in the Dixieland. So, so as you know, you sit on the commission, the Florida Department of Transportation will continue collecting data through spring on the South Florida Avenue Lane Reduction Test in Dixieland. Because of that, new information may emerge, still based on what you know now. Would you vote in favor of recommending the DOT make the lane reduction permanent?
That is a great question. And I was joking when I said I was excited about it. Um, and that's for the audience here live. Sorry, Facebook. But, um, so for, with regard to the road diet, I think the critical component of this is what I've learned as a city commissioner is that ultimately the Florida Department of Transportation has say. So I can say, yes, I'll vote to keep it. Or I can say, no, I'll vote for them to pop up those curbs and get them out of there. The constituency that I represent wants those curbs gone. The more and more and more people, I hear more about the road diet every day. And so most of the constituents want that out of there uh, for ease of traffic. Here's the problem, though. The Florida Department of Transportation will still condemn that as a failing road. So there is really no answer, either from the staff of the city, nor from the Florida Department of Transportation on if we say we wanna keep it or we don't wanna keep it, what will happen? So if we vote it down, it could potentially still stay there because it's a state road and it's managed by the Florida Department of Transportation.
And, and, and citizens need to know that. Um, I'm gonna come to you, Dr. Terrell, about the same question. And I wanna just ask you, would you, would you vote to, to keep that, uh, lane reduction?
I believe Dixieland was fine the way it was, but I understand the Department of Transportation have to provide the, the barriers for safety mechanisms. Uh, I seen a car, one time I was walking the, the community, I seen a car jump one of those barriers because it was wide and bulky and it pretty much almost tore up their front frame, uh, of their fender, the right fender at that, and their tire. So if the Department of Transportation are gonna keep these barriers, they need to narrow them down, uh, shrink them down as far as the wide turn, just in case, so there won't be no major accidents, uh, within the intersection. It's a catch twenty-two as far as the, the Dixieland area, because it's already narrow and congested. Then you had the bike lane and the businesses, which I understand they had the barriers there, but they need, if the, if the Department of Transportation are gonna keep those barriers there, they need to narrow, narrow them down and shrink them down. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what Mayor Mutz, uh, said last night was that it has reduced, um, crashes in the area. And I'm, I'm sure Barry will make sure that he go back and look at that to make, make sure that I am quoting right. And so, um, in, in that regard, it's, it sounds like a positive. But Mike, your thoughts? Would you keep, uh, vote to keep that lane reduction?
And, and again, so many times when you ask questions, there's multiple parts to it. So there's two parts to that. One, there's, there's, there's Mike Music, who can't stand him, doesn't like him and thinks that they're awful. And then there's the second part of that, which is the constituents I represent. They don't like it. They think it stinks and they want them gone. Now, but, but, but it's such a, I mean, everybody hears, I mean, this is, this is a problem that is bigger than us. Now, we're gonna be forced to deal with it, so we have to. So, so, you know, I've been racking my brain. My, my sister lives right off of that street. My brother lives in Dixieland. My sister lives off of Beacon. I live near there, so we're using this all the time. Uh, when I run cross-country with the kids, we, we used to run down that, and I know when you're driving there in a semi is there, it's tough. It's tough. So, so we need to, um, continue to look at it. Now, what's interesting is I, I did a ride along with a, with a police officer and I was talking about this. And I think that, that the mayor is probably right that the accidents have gone down. But, but my conversation with him is they have moved.
Yeah.
Right? The accidents, we don't have as many cars, therefore the, the accidents have moved. So, um, I, I, you know, and I have just about twenty seconds. So I will, so I will say this. I think that it is important. You know, we've got, we've got the, the state DOT, we've got, we've got Chuck and his department. We've got some brainiacs working on this. So I hope that when they come to us, we have something that we can hash out and make better than it is, because what we have isn't good. What we had, what we had prior to isn't good. So we've gotta work hard.
Thank you so much. There you go. Al, same question.
Um, so again, it is a lot of moving parts to this. And I am one of those people who literally, when I'm riding down the road, do like this. You know, it gets frustrating because of all the traffic. But again, I have to take myself out of, out of the equation and say, human life or the vehicle, which one is more important? Because yes, we're trying to get somewhere really, really fast, but is it worth me driving fifty-five to sixty to seventy miles to get there? Because if that happens, then I'll get into a crash and where I'm going is still not important because I'm not there. So again, I think we need to continue to work with our city's great team to look at this. I, I am a resident too. And, and, and the residents, I've been hearing, it's frustrating. Trust me, I, I'm a driver too. But let's look at the moving parts. I would love for it to be condensed a little bit, um, so we can, can get around. But again, it's either human, but you have to look at it, human life or our vehicle, which one is moving?
Thank you. So in addition to the races for mayor and city commission, November's ballot includes two proposed amendments to the city charter. Uh, one involves the procedure to replace a commissioner who has resigned from office or can no longer serve. The other involves the makeup of the city canvassing board. What is your position on these two amendments? And Dr. Terrell, I'll start with you. And, and if I were you, I would just leave that, that microphone alone.
I would say no, because I believe the residents should have a voice on who they want in that seat.
And, uh, short and sweet. Al?
Um, I'm, short and sweet. No, the residents should have a voice, um, as to who they want to see on the commission.
And Mike?
Do I get like time?
Oh, yes.
Oh, this is real.
I was, I was, I was actually responding to him. Now, I wasn't telling you.
Yeah. So, 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 oh, I'm sorry.
I was responding.
So, yeah. So, so, so I'm going to agree with, with both of them, right? And, and the two commissioners that are up here running for reelection face that very issue. Right? And, and, and I wanna say that they, they said that the, that, um, Chandel, our election was a hundred and something thousand dollars for us to, to run. Um, which, which is a big deal, which kind of started some of these thoughts.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, should, should we as a, as a, as a, um, commission, appoint somebody to fill that? Which Don Salvage did for a little bit before, um, before I got, um, before I won. So, so I would say on that, no. I, I think that we do need to, it's a shame because it is gonna be expensive. It is gonna cost money to do that. But I think that that is important, um, that we do let the individuals, like we did, like we are now, hear us, get to know us. Because, you know, I mean, it's a, a two-year term as a, and, you know, Sarah's was a three-year term. That's all, you know, three quarters of a full term. I think it's important that we go back to the citizens. And, and I like the fact that we have these on the ballot because it's important for us sometimes to say, well, this is what we think, but we're not sure. Let's let the people decide. And I love that it's going there.
Thank you so much. And Sarah, what about you?
So we're just talking about the first one?
Well.
Or do you wanna talk about both?
You can talk about both of them. Yes.
So really, I'm gonna, um, respectfully disagree with my peers up here. So this, what happened when Mike was elected and even in my election, what this would do, it was not have pushed me from that January election date. It would have moved it to the next municipal election. So when Scott Franklin resigned to run for Congress, he assumed mistakenly, I mean, it wasn't his fault, but we all kind of thought, and we couldn't discuss it because of sunshine, but we all thought, well, his seat will go on the November ballot. So that we would go to the Polk County Supervision Elections, we would put that open seat on the November ballot because it was a presidential. That seat would be filled, filled. And so when he transitioned into Congress, if he had won, which he did, then we would have a new commissioner starting that January, right? So then this would not have happened with Mike and with Dale. Um, what this does is it pushes it to the next municipal election. So it wouldn't have been me fulfilling a three-year term. It would have been the person who was appointed Commissioner Salvage at the time, would have fulfilled until that next municipal election. So it wouldn't go as long as thirty-six months. I think the maximum. I think the maximum will be 18 months at the very, very most. So it cleans up the language and it helps us manage a little bit better. So I guess I just answered on the one.
Yes, okay, we'll, we'll take it. We're, we're, we're almost done with the, the questions that we have and we'll move into, um, questions from the listening, viewing audience. And so, um, second to last question, and I'm going to start with you, Sarah. At this week's city commission meeting, a pastor and two others asked the commission to declare Lakeland a sanctuary city for the unborn, which would effectively shut down the city's one abortion clinic. What's your position on becoming a sanctuary city for the unborn?
I appreciated, um, the minister and several people coming and speaking on the topic. As far as us becoming a sanctuary city, that's something that that's the first time I had heard of as a request from the community. So I can't articulate exactly what that would even mean and how that process would even happen. So therefore, until I understand exactly legally what would happen with regard to that, I don't, I have not felt that that was something that, um, each municipality can do, but I guess now that it can. And so I'm looking at our legal counsel to figure out how that would work. And what really is the, um, purview of the city commission in regard to that and whether the state can supersede that. So even if we did say we agreed with that or we didn't agree with that, could state come in? Because my understanding is in Texas right now, the state government can actually go in.
Yes.
And they can preempt. So state government tends to do that sometimes, that's where the home rule, uh, debate comes into play. So that's something that's relatively new to me. Um, I can't really speak to it because I'm, again, and also I've been campaigning since our meeting Monday morning. So it's been a little busy to delve into the, to the actual legality of that.
Um, Al, would you vote for Lakeland to become a sanctuary city for the unborn?
Um, so again, I am still, like Sarah, doing my research on that, being a law student. We are taught, don't open your mouth unless you have that legal background, that legal understanding of what's going on. So again, I'm still doing my own.
Thank you so much. Dr. Terrell? Same question. Did I not tell you, sir, to leave the microphone?
Uh, research need to be done, but I believe that's more of a, a state and federal, uh, law, uh, mandate, so to say. Or if they want to pass that, uh, if it come down to us on the municipality, that's fine. But, uh, we would have to vote on that as a commission, but, uh, I don't have no problems with it. But it's more of a state and federal law. I never, this is the first time I ever heard of that, really. So, uh, research need to be done to have a better understanding of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I, I think, um, Mike was at that city commission meeting when the issue came up. So your thoughts on the matter?
Yeah, and this is usually where I, I, if there's something to step in, I usually find it. Um, and, and, and that, and that is because
I hope not.
I probably wouldn't be a good attorney, right? Because I will tell you what I think, because that's the question that has been asked. And, and the question is, would I, yes, is there legal issues? Probably, right? But if you're asking my opinion and if I had a vote on the commission and our legal team said, yes, it's okay, 100%. We think that COVID's taken a lot of deaths, let's look at abortion.
I appreciate your comments. I am, um, I have a, a question here, uh, about vision. I'm going to tell you ahead of time, so you can be thinking, um, Barry, maybe just give me the thumbs up. I'm wondering if we should head to the questions from our online, Barry Trinity, and then, yes, that's what I was thinking. So what is the best use of the CRA property in mass market area near Lighthouse Ministries, Dr. Terrell?
Best use for CRA C?
The CR, yes, uh, that, that property in mass market area near Lighthouse Ministries.
Uh, I would say redevelop, uh, I, I would like to keep Lighthouse Ministries there. Have a problem with Lighthouse Ministries, uh, regarding its functions.
Okay. Uh, Mike? The best use of the CRA property in mass market area near Lighthouse Ministries?
And I apologize, is there a specific piece of property that we're talking about? Because I'm not on the CRA board, so some of that stuff I, I don't know and I apologize.
General, yes.
I got you, okay. So, so, yeah, so one of, one of the greatest things we can do is when we have, um, private partner, um, private public partnerships, um, we look at, um, we look at the yard en masse, we look at, at House 820. We look at, we look at a lot of these items around here. And I think that when the city has, for whatever reason, condemned some land, knocked buildings down, taken it over, what I love to see is an individual, a business, come in, employ the local people, and let's do that. This, the CRA is not, and it shouldn't be, and in fact, we were just talking, um, about this, uh, in our meeting, about the Parker Street Ministries and, um, the debt on that building and how the CRA is handling that. That is a great example of where a nonprofit has come in to some property. They spent a million plus dollars themselves over the last 20 years rejuvenating it and have done such a good job for the citizens of that area and, and Lakeland as a whole. So any land that the city has, first and foremost, I would love to see them utilize it in a, in a, in a private, because the business, the private industry can certainly, most of the times, do better than, um, than government. And I would like to see it revitalized, uh, in that manner.
All right, thank you so much. Um, Sarah?
Um, I'm glad that Commissioner Music actually brought up the Parker Street Ministries, because I think that in that corridor area, at times, our comprehensive plan had looked at that and making it a medical corridor area. So it goes north of Memorial and into the hospital area and kind of bringing that a little bit south. But I think this is a really big area for community engagement. I think it's a great opportunity to find out what the residents want to see there as part of the CRA, how the CRA can best support that neighborhood even further. Parker Street's done an amazing job. House 820 has brought life there that's a little bit different, it's an event space, um, they do, you know, yoga, they do all sorts of different things. And even the, the collective and that community garden that LCS Online is doing, or LCS Rise is doing. But I think having community engagement to really be a voice into what happens in that area next is critical.
And Al?
Um, so I'm going to mirror what Sarah said.
Yes.
If I use your mic. Okay, thank you so much, Sarah. Good. Okay, anyways, so I think it is, uh, highly imperative that we do, um, involve, uh, the community in, in that area um, to get their, uh, feedback as it relates as to what to do. Um, I would love to see anytime you have more businesses come in that area, you also have the opportunity, uh, for jobs for people. So again, community, more community engagement, and hey, I'm all for bringing in more local businesses for people.
All right, thank you. So this is the last question we have from our audience, and it's, how do you feel about large institutions encroaching on historic neighborhoods such as South Lake Ma- Morton or Dixieland? And I'm going to start with you and come down the line. So Al?
You asked your question again?
Sure. How do you feel about large institutions encroaching on historic neighborhoods such as South Lake Morton or Dixieland?
When you say institutions?
It's a question from the audience, and so I can't embellish or do anything about it.
Oh, okay, okay, good, good. Okay, got you. Got you, got you, got you. So, so again, as our, as our city grows, you know, where there are new opportunities arising. And so when you have, when I, when, you know, when I think about, I, I'm a lover of education. So anytime you have a facility of education expanding, what that tells me is this, more opportunities to educate the people. And so, listen, I'll be for it with a little bit more research and go more in depth, uh, in it. I'm all for it, because as a, as an institution grows, such as Florida Southern and in a Southeastern, that lets me know instantly, there are more educational opportunities and that is what the people need in the city.
And Sarah?
Um, so with that question specifically, I think it's another opportunity for community engagement. And that's where the Neighborhood Area Coalition, Association of Coalition really comes together, is that South Lake Morton of, you know, participating with South Lake, South Lake Morton Neighborhood Association, you know, is Florida Southern reaching out and having conversations with them about that. That's something that should be happening, the same holds true for Dixieland and Presbyterian Homes or the Crystal Lake area with Southeastern University. I think that it's a dialogue that has to continue if we do have a need for space for those institutions. I agree that education is a critical component of our economic development, and so I want to see that those things, uh, continue. But maybe there's a better way to do it from a planning perspective, but if we don't talk to our neighbors about it and we're not good neighbors, then it kind of will provide a rub.
Sure. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, and I, and, and that's absolutely right, and I'd like to take, take a springboard a little bit off of that. Um, and, and that is when, 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 um, Florida Southern looked and wanted to take over and then create a nursing school there. What I liked about it, it was a revitalization of a building that had been there for a very long time. Um, and, and they actually presented the plan of what they were going to do. We asked a lot of questions, I actually met with the president of, of Florida Southern, just helped me understand this, because I was concerned, right? We don't want that to be a, an annex of another school around there, but they repurposed, because my fear, when I saw that thing for sale was, it was going to be torn down and we were going to see, you know, this high rise of apartments building, and that scared me. Um, but, but, um, you know, another thing, and these comments have been out on the campaign trail a little bit, and that is talking about how quickly things move. And I'm going to tell you, things move very, very intentionally and almost at a snail's pace at time through the process of this, right? So, so I want to just reiterate the fact that it, it's not something as simple as, as, as Southeastern, Florida Southern, Lakeland Christian, McKeel. Any of these schools don't get to just say, hey, we're going to buy that property, and here's what we're going to turn it into. There's a lot of steps, a lot of hurdles that they have to get approval for, and during that entire process, the city has an opportunity to engage. And I, I want to encourage them to continue to do that.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Terrell?
I'm going to go back to the CRA C and the Lighthouse real quick. I believe the residents should have a voice of that, uh, of what's done to that property. Uh, in addition to the institutions, institutions of higher education and the spending, uh, as long as, uh, that area is vacant and, uh, if it's, uh, if it's, if it's, uh, if I could say, if it's, uh, viable to the institution and a resident is not living there, yes, the institution can expand. But when you have a resident that's living there, I think the institution need to, uh, respect the resident there, or they need to have a meeting of the minds. I just don't think the institution of higher education should overstep their boundaries with that resident living there.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I did kind of preempt this by saying I had a final question about vision. And so I am going to start with you, Mike. What is your vision for Lakeland? If you're elected and accomplish your goals, how will Lakeland look different in 10 years?
You know, in, in 10 years, that's interesting, you know, in, in, in 1890, when we had our first census here, we had just under 600 people. Right? Our, our, the last census that I was able to read was about 115,000. Um, so we're talking about a tremendous amount of growth, and this I-4 corridor is nothing but exploding, right? My, my daughter had fall break and she was able to come down, um, from Ohio, from college to hang out for a couple of days. And in an hour, she can be at the beach. At 45 minutes, she can be at Disney World. And that's why people want to come here. So, so what my vision is for Lakeland in the next 10 years is a stronger, more diverse economically, right? Because again, you know, I, 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 I look at it through the lenses and the shoes that I wear, is economically, we have so much that we offer. I'm in the construction trade, I see the amount of construction that's going on. I believe that the city is doing a very, very good job of not letting the gas go full. They're pumping, they're asking questions, we've got, we've got excellent staff, and then we have a great commissioner mayor that are taking pause and saying, let's ask these questions. So I, I think that that is crucial, that people know that, so
You have 20 seconds.
In 10 years, what I want is I want my three kids living here with great high-wage jobs. I want some grandbabies, and I want to, I want to hand off a better city to them.
I think, Dr. Terrell, please have a seat, sir. Uh, I think, um, that in 20 years, or 10 years as we asked, you might have those grandbabies, but please do not make any bet on your kids living here.
Come on, Al.
So, Al, the very same question.
It's working now, Sarah. Thank you. Oh, the very same question. So in 10, in 10 years, I'll be 38 years old. So hopefully I'll be married and have my own ki- kids of my own. But again, I go back to my main pillars, more equitable opportunities for all. Have to increase the education, so therefore the people can have better paying jobs, so they can have more money, they can enjoy the quality of life. And again, we need our youth. I am, I, I'm an educator. And so when I look at our children, they are the future. They will lead. In the next 10 years, maybe one of my students will be standing in the same position that I'm in. I want to ensure that we educate these students on an entrepreneurial level, because local business is important. Also to ensure that, um, more technology program, uh, they need to learn this technology. Because again, the, the world is growing, and particularly Lakeland is growing by leaps and bounds. So ensuring that we have a great, uh, it's diverse, a diverse Lakeland, uh, to ensure more equitable opportunities on all sides. So my former students and my children won't come up in the ranks of saying, well, we don't have this and we don't have that, because we're a part of this demographic.
You have 20 seconds?
One Lakeland, having the opportunities, having equitable opportunities as a small business and as a person who maybe just want to be a teacher or a nurse or whatever. Yes, thank you.
Dr. Terrell, would you like to tell me about your vision, sir, and how Lakeland, should you get elected, how it will look different in 10 years?
Yes, uh, 10 years, uh, I would like to see Lakeland within 10 years have great safe roads, uh, safe communities with our law enforcement. In addition to that, uh, Lakeland being the economic opportunity, uh, city, with the speed rail traveling from Orlando to Hillsborough County connecting down to South Florida, hopefully. I'm hoping that that can take place within that 10-year span, and it's a step process, because you have to get the buy-in from the county, commission, then the state, and then the federal PCO funds that, that are, that are to come down. So that speed rail would be a key component, uh, to the productivity, uh, within the city of Lakeland. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And Sarah, your vision for the city of Lakeland? And should you, uh, get reelected, what will Lakeland look like in 10 years?
So in 10 years, um, I'll be 60, I just turned 50, which is a little, a little bit older than Al. But in 10 years, I would love to have a community where, just like Mike said, and I think we all agree, I have two children, one of whom is at the University of Florida, one is a sophomore in high school right now, that where they can attain their education if they choose to stay in town and attain education or vocational school or go away, but also have the opportunity to come back and have a well-paying job, an affordable place to live, and that they have their options of whether they want to start their own business or if they want to go work at a great place like Publix. I want to make sure that all of these businesses in our community at large is successful economically. But even more than that, I think personally, I would like them to come back and be able to get engaged. I'd like them to be good community citizens. I think all of our youth have so much to teach us. But I'd like them to look at Lakeland and say, not only is that a great place to work and find a good job and use my education, but it's a great place to go to church, it's a great place to be a part of the community. And I don't feel like I have to be invited to be part of the community, I feel like I am a part of that community and it's my home.
Thank you so very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends the question and answer portion of our night. I'd like to thank our commissioners for being so gracious and for answering the questions so very well. I'd like to thank you for being so patient, and a special thanks to our viewing audience. I'm Andrea Oliver, I'd like to wish you a very good evening, remember November 2nd. And I'd like to turn it over to the man, the vision behind all of this, Barry Friedman.
And a big thanks to Andrea, didn't she do a great job? Andrea's wonderful. Want to thank, uh, again, everybody who came out tonight, especially the people who watched online. Uh, the people who were online know that at the beginning, there were maybe a few, few imbalances with the audio. We're going to clean that up and have a good, fresh copy on our website and social media. Maybe tomorrow before that gets done, we'll have the, uh, version that was online already, uh, later tonight, so you can review it then. Um, we all learned a lot tonight. I think hopefully, uh, we learned enough that will help people make a decision on who they're going to vote for on November 2nd. I want to remind you about a couple of deadlines. The deadline to request vote by mail ballots is October 23rd. Uh, early voting takes place October 25th to November 1st. There are three locations around Polk County, the closest one to us is the Polk Government Operations Center at, uh, 930 East Parker Street. Lakeland now has a voter's guide with a lot of information about all the candidates, about, we have, uh, copies of videos of every, uh, forum we've been able to get our hands on so far, and, uh, just a, a good resource to research the candidates. One thing I'm going to ask the candidates, um, I don't think I'm quite up to date on who has been endorsed by whom. So if you could email me, or you just tell me tonight, who those endorsements are, we'll get those added as well. I know I've got some of them, but I don't think I have all of them. Let's remind everybody that Lakeland now is a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to get people more engaged in Lakeland through news and information. All of our content is free, but we ask for donations for those who appreciate what All of our content is free, but we ask for donations for those who appreciate what we do, if you find it valuable. However, I'm going to ask you to hold off on making those donations for a couple weeks. In November and December, we're part of a national tribe called Newsmatch. It's part of the Institute for Nonprofit News, which is an organization we're part of along with about 300 other organizations across North America. During that period, during November and December, every donation we get up to 100,000, excuse me, I thought which was 100, up to $1,000 is matched 100%. We have matches from um a lot of national foundations, but in addition, we have at this point, one very generous local match, so that will actually triple your 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 dollars, and we, who knows, might get another uh local match or two. So um that's that. The other thing I want to announce, and I think last night was the first time I announced this publicly, is we have a kickoff event for Newsmatch, and we're calling that NewsAid 3. So we've had a series of concerts the last three years, the first one was actually right here on this stage two years ago. Uh, we're going to have four bands at Yardlawn Mass, it's going to be Friday, November 12th, 6:00 PM. I think the admission is $10, is that right, Trinity? Oh, okay, no, it's not right. $15, okay. Still a discount, still a good price. Uh, I think I'm going to, off the top of my head, go with the bands I know that are going to be there. We're going to have the Moon Park Saints, uh, Craig Morby from the Moon Park Saints is organizing the music and he does an incredible job of that. We have Micah Madore, who I think is working the uh the audio for us tonight, thank you, Micah. Um, we have, um, I know we have, I know about Kimmy, was there one other? Oh, Nancy Blair Black, great vocalist and and keyboard player and songwriter, and what I think will be a really special treat, Kimmy Gabriella, I think some of us remember her when she was a finalist on American Idol about a year, year and a half ago, she was in the top 20, I think might have gotten to the top 10. Uh, she will be performing with a band that she's put together, so we're really looking forward to having Kimmy. That's it, thanks you for, everybody for coming tonight. Thank you.